Open the meeting?
Yeah, where we at?
Open the meeting at 7:18 and it's being recorded by Area 58.
Uh, 984 is where it's at. The Halifax zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing Monday, January 9th, and tonight at 7:05 PM at the Board of Selectmen Meeting Room at Halifax Town Hall, 499 Plymouth Street, Halifax, on the application by James Rodriguez for a special permit to, and variance to raise, rebuild, and expand a damaged structure located in Nine Lakes Street, Halifax. Set property is owned by James Rodriguez of Nine Lakes Street, Halifax, as shown on Assessor's Map 20, Lot 1533, Books 4, 7, 5, 5, 2, Page 91. The applicant is seeking a special permit to raise, rebuild, and expand a damaged, non-conforming structure in accordance with the Town of Halifax zoning bylaws, Chapter 167-8A, continuation 167-8C, extension, and 167-8D restoration by adding a second story to a portion of the structure. Per the building inspector, the proposed dwelling exceeds 50% of the original area, exceeds the original height, and is closer to the street. The applicant is also seeking a variance to reduce the foundation height requirement in accordance with the Town of Halifax zoning bylaws, Chapter 167-10, General Density Regulations. Area is own residential and it's petition number 984.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good yourselves?
Good.
Is up you want me?
Yeah.
Um, since, the last time we were here, last month, I had an update planned that eliminated all of our various requests. Does not move the house closer to the street, puts it basically on the exact same footprint. And I think at the time, everybody was in agreement to whether this was okay to approve. I don't think there was anything that was a problem with the architecture, or the character of the neighborhood, or anything that had deviated from the bylaws. So, does any other questions that you have, I'd have to answer them.
Anybody have any question?
Did we receive anything from? I know we were gonna go to the town council and get a response to a question. I don't think we have.
Unless, again, unless the nail, is a nail over there?
There you go. Decisions, if there's anything that, what we're asking council, again?
Right.
Right. So, the, the, so I think what we talked about last time is that it does not exceed 50% of the original area, right? It's generally the same footprint, just turned, if I remember.
It's the same footprint, because about another 500 square feet on the set of four.
Right.
But it's a tiny little, simple 700 square foot structure to be given, and just technically could be more than 50% of the, of this existing structure.
It's not close to the street, you said, right?
It is not closer to the street, and there's no longer a variance request for the foundation height.
Right.
You're building it on the same footprint.
Same footprint.
But, the problem is that you can't have, you can't have the second story.
Yes.
Well, that's the need for the special permit.
I think so, but I thought it was for, you know, variance on special permit.
So, that, yeah, so the, in restoration, which is D, the bylaws, a non-conforming building or structure, um, shall not exceed the original area by 50%, uh, but there's, there's an argument that, like, this area with the second story, but specifically, shall not exceed the original height, which is...
It's going above.
Which is, right? It's an increase in height?
It is, yes.
Yep.
Absolutely.
And then there's a, an exemption, which you mentioned, but, uh, the exemption is only, doesn't create additional floor, is only if it does not increase or create any additional floor area, and shall not, it shall be deemed not to increase non-conforming nature, um, but I think it, I think it adds additional floor area, right?
It does, and that's why they need for a special permit. Otherwise, I would have to move the entire foundation closer to the lake. Um, I would still be allowed under the, um, the damaged structure bylaw, because I wouldn't be increasing the height, I could increase the footprint up to 50%. That just makes more sprawl and less, less attractive building, as far as I'm concerned. The roof line, of course, could be changed regardless, I just couldn't use the space under it.
Right.
That's, that's become the problem. So, the special permit is, is to allow the, the space underneath the roof line to be used as...
For a living area, or just for storage?
For a living area, or an office.
That's a sticky one.
Yeah.
It doesn't have any place to put it on the property, that's the problem.
No, that's, you know, you can't go either way, you know?
It's so small.
Yeah. I mean, I guess, and this is what we're asking lawyer, which we didn't get a response to, is, is whether we can, whether that is written so you can issue a special permit to do it, or whether or not it says you cannot.
Cannot, and need a variance.
Right, that's kinda, I mean, it's kinda how it seems, like, it's... And, and the issue is, it keeps them from being able to do that, which, I mean, if, if there's anything that the bylaw review committee should review, it's probably those four, A, B, C, D's, because it keeps, like, restoration and, and, like, renewal of some of those lots back there from happening sometimes, and creates this.
Well, you know, I think the only issue really is whether, whether the damaged structure is impacted or not. And if there were no damaged structure, which is just basically a new hunch, if there were no damaged structure, it would be like every other raise or rebuild that the ZBA has approved over the last, you know, 10 years. It would be no difference that, that people would have doubled their, their living space, added a second story. I know that's been done down on Lake Street, I know that's been done in a number of other places. Um, whether that was right or wrong, it was, it was dumb. So, the only thing, the only complication here is that I, I was having hardship, because I was down in South Carolina for the winter, and my pipes froze. So, that was the whole story that I was trying to give the building inspector, rather than just blanketly applying for the special permit. But the special permit without the, without the damaged structure component is still the special permit. The damaged structure was just a, was just a hardship.
So, you're saying on that street, there were, there were extensions of a non-conforming building that added an additional story that was not previously there, that created additional force place on that street?
I can't say on that street, I know certainly within the town.
But, I think what he's saying is, if his structure was not damaged, or he's put addition on the building, would he be in front of us? So, if there's nothing wrong with the single floor home, he applied for a building permit, put a second floor on it, would he be in front of us?
Well, probably, because it's an extension of a non-conforming structure.
Correct. But, but you see, I'm being penalized because the structure's damaged.
But then it's a special permit. But didn't you mention, unfortunately, I'm not totally familiar with the way you own your property, is, that there were second story additions on, on neighbors that across you are?
There have been a number of additions, these are all small, little...
But they're not, but they're not on the same footprint as your house, they're a little bigger area than, than what you had.
Well, again, they're all non-conforming lots, so, less non-conforming, more non-conforming.
So, if their building was bigger, then they would, even they'd be able to do the addition.
This way, it's limited to space, and the only way he can go up, go is up, and that's it.
I have talked with the neighbor, and he was, he was, didn't have any problem with anything I was just doing, so, he had been here, he had his...
Sure we should ask town council for this?
Yeah, I mean, I...
We would like, we would like to ask, you know, town council, and we'll have to get back to you.
That's what we did last month.
I know, we didn't have an answer.
And now he's waiting another month, and he waited another month, because we didn't even have a call.
We make a, we make the wrong decision, then...
Well, and that's what I worry about for you, right? Like, if, we make a decision here, well, it may or may not, but it, if somebody doesn't want a second story on your house, because it blocks a view, or they just don't want it, or they just drive around town, they don't think it should happen, because they don't want their own neighbor on another side of the town to have it, uh, they sue in land court, it becomes a nightmare for you, because we made a, a decision, because there's an argument here somewhere that, that it shouldn't have happened, because, I mean, like...
Well, I understand the dynamic.
Right.
I'm certainly not afraid of anybody feeling, but, but we'd like to see if we could vote and close the hearing contingent on approval from the town council. I don't, I don't have a problem, you know, I certainly don't want to do anything that's, that's illegal, that's gonna conflict with what town council recommends. I don't think there's anything here that would do that, but if we could close the hearing, vote on the, vote on the proposal as is, and then, then make it contingent before final approval on the, on the, the town council opinion, um, that, that would be fine with me, I just don't, I don't keep wanting, we started this in January, and I'm, you know, none of us are getting any younger, so, I just wanna see if we can move it along somewhat, and if this, if there's a way to remove the damaged component, and just deal with it as an expansion of a, of a non-conforming structure, and expansion of a non-conforming u, uh, structure, that's fine too. Like I said, I was just trying to provide full disclosure on everything I was gonna do to the building inspector and the board.
There is someone currently, like, as we speak, putting a second floor on old ocean map, because when I drive by it on 58, I can see it, and I was like, oh, I'm like, we're pretty close to Lake Street.
Right there on the corner?
Yeah. So, without knowing the exact parameters of that, I'm like, hmm, it's obviously another second story.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know whether that's okay, or whether they had some sort of use or something like that, I just, I, I mean, the words, the words are pretty clear, this is what the problem is, so, like, it, so, the, the bylaws state what you can and can't do, and then it says, if you have a non-conforming use, which is what this, this is, and there's plenty of lots in town that, that meet this, it says, "A non-conforming building or structure which has been damaged or destroyed may be repaired or rebuilt, provided such restoration shall not exceed the original area," which we talked about, "and shall not exceed the original height, and placed no nearer the street line." So, I think we have two, two of the three of those, there's an exemption for the, the pitch of the roof line, uh, but can't expand the building horizontally, and doesn't increase or create any additional floor area.
Which basically says that I can expand to the rear of the property, to my heart's content, as long as I'm not over the existing height of the structure. The problem becomes, because you have a bylaw that, that requires a, a number of feet above the center line of the road...
Yeah.
Changing, building to the building code to get appropriate ceiling heights is complicated by the roof pitch. So, in other words, if you come up eight feet, and you have to have a three-foot foundation, and you have 11 feet to, you have 13 feet to work with...
Yeah.
And flat-roofed.
Yeah, and I, and I think you're right, I think that, but I think we figured that one out. I mean, the issue, the issue is, you wouldn't be here if you weren't putting the second story on.
Yes, I would, originally.
You'd need this special permit, or the variance for what?
So, the last building inspector who was here, this is how far back this goes...
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, required me to, 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 to get a special permit. And I put it aside, I got involved in other things, and then my pipes froze, and here I am, so...
Yeah, and I, and I think that this would, I would, I don't know if we have any pause at all, if, if there wasn't a second story, and I think the thing that's holding us back is literally just the second story, and I...
That's right.
And it, like, I don't wanna, I don't wanna do something we shouldn't do, but also put you in a really bad spot by just saying, yeah, if we're not supposed to.
Well, I don't think, I, in my personal opinion, I don't think the board is doing anything wrong or putting me in a bad place. I think that, um, there is a degree of reasonableness that says, you know, as long as I'm not being offensive in what I'm doing, that, um, whatever the board agrees to is, is, is what the board agrees to. I don't think there's an issue with reasonableness, uh, and I think, you know, I'm not, not going up three stories, I'm just covering up one half of the structure for about 15 or 18 feet, so it's not, and, and right now, I have 20-foot arboritees in front of it, and red maples in front of it, and another tree behind it, so, the height with all of that, when it's in foliage, is the same height as the, as the, the new structure would be. But, again, if, if I don't wanna, they don't wanna tell the, the town council what to do, uh, you know, I mean, the, the, if, if they wanna give an opinion, that's, that's different than that, I can come with a different proposal, you won't like it anymore than this one, but I could certainly come with a different proposal, I'm just trying to do the, do the appropriate thing, rather than, you know, just shove something across the table. If, if town council wants to give an opinion that, that says that you can't do this, because it puts the town at risk, I certainly wouldn't wanna put the town at risk. But I do wanna move things along, I do wanna, the hearing's closed, I do wanna hit, otherwise I won't be constructing until next year.
I just don't think it has anywhere else to put it.
No, I agree with you, I just, yeah.
What's the point of the board?
I'd like to hear from town council. So, who contacts town council? Do you?
I can contact, uh...
Make sure it's, we get a lot.
We can contact, you know, town council lets you know next month.
That's what this one's supposed to be.
I know, I know, I feel that. Yeah, I mean, we can close the hearing and then just, yeah.
We can continue it, right?
Yeah, as long as, we get a, we get an extension to today, right?
Yeah.
Last night?
Yeah, I mean, this is just, this is getting to be half-way, and, you know, I know it's as tedious for you as it is for me.
We make the wrong decision, then, it's, it's on us that...
People are out there.
We won't be, you know, we're not doing you justice by making you, making a wrong decision for you.
Well, I'll be happy to bring in some, uh, some ZBA decisions over the last 10 or 15 years, uh, that have increased square footage with variances, with special permit expansions, and we can assess which of those is more or less applicable to this property, because I know in my, my casual view, I've found a habit of, that are more egregious than this one, and I'm happy to, to go through those and, and discuss those with town council, or without town council, but I don't think, like I said, I don't think I would be unreasonable. But if you wanna continue the hearing, I don't have any choice, I'm gonna get town council's opinion, and I will be happy to call town council myself, if it'll help.
No, we'll get, we'll get...
I don't, I don't think we've ever made a, a decision on...
I'm trying to think.
I'm trying, I'm saying, you know, waiting for town council approval, I don't think we've ever done that.
No.
We've had, we've put exceptions in, in conditions, but, I don't know, we're waiting for a legal, a legal opinion, and I think that's, that's, that's the problem, I would love to, believe me, I think we all want you to, we want you to get this.
I don't think you're asking for something that's unreasonable, I just...
And, you know, I'm sorry that the town council did not get back to us, I mean, they had plenty of time to look at this here, and...
Well, as I said, I'll be happy to go through the files, and go through the court records, go through the, the registry records.
I think that's unnecessary, I think, you know, unfortunately, we have to wait for the town council, as soon as we get the, as soon as we get an answer on it, we'll certainly...
Of course, if town council gives me the wrong answer, I'll end up suing town council anyway, so, it's, it's not a wasted effort to go through and find similar cases.
You know, that's the position that we find ourselves in, unfortunately.
Sure.
It's, it's, we don't like this at all.
Sure, I understand.
Again, common sense is, uh, it's not there.
Yeah, all right, no worries.
The best, the best answer would be to change it in town meetings, so this, these four things don't say what they say, because we're hamstrung by these things all the time. It keeps people from being able to renovate properties like this, that's, but they, they don't get that.
And so many cottages with all these lakes.
Because there's a million non-conforming lots in town, that, that people are stuck having to come in here months and months and months and months and months in a row, yeah.
Okay, so what is the next hearing?
We can, uh...
It's June, probably June 12, right?
June 12.
Yeah.
June 12.
So, make a motion to continue to June 12.
Awaiting council answers.
Yeah, awaiting council answers.
I'll second it.
Yes.
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 Myself, yes.
I'm sorry.
You never mind.
We may, yeah.
I know.
That's ridiculous.
That could be. I haven't seen it in there, might be in a different folder or something. All right, where we at? Uh, 989.
Petition 989?
Yep. Uh, the Halifax zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, April 10th at 7:50 in the Board of Selectmen's Meeting Room at Halifax Town Hall, 499 Plymouth Street, Halifax, on the application by Robert and Laura DeLasky for a special permit to build an addition for an in-law apartment located at 30 Orchard Circle, Halifax. Said property is owned by Robert and Laura DeLasky of 30 Orchard Circle, Halifax, as shown on Assessor's Map 90, Lot 8H, Book 3, 7869, Page 188. The applicant is seeking a special permit to build an addition for an in-law apartment, as this project would violate Halifax zoning bylaw 167-7D12, Schedule of Use Regulations. The area is own residential and it's petition number 989.
Good evening, Stephen Wright with Land Planning on behalf of DeLaskys, and that, and Laura's parents, the leads, who are looking at the movement to this project. We discussed, discussed the project at the last hearing, and I think we answered all your questions, if you have more, we'd be happy to answer those, and I know you voted to have a site walk, because the abutment, the abutment had some problems on the project. So, we had that site walk last Saturday, and Bob and Tina were, they didn't attend to the site walk, and I think just, we can make comments on your own, but I, I think it was clear that the water issue, the abutment thought he would have for this project, just isn't conceivable to happen.
The only way you can have that water issue is if that fire truck was...
Even if it's like a rainy day, too, right? If there's gonna be water there, it's a water...
It's considerably up though.
Yeah, the abutment that had a concern, his house is up higher than this property, and his property pitches towards this property, this pitches away.
What were you doing?
It goes all the way back, so, your abutment's property is higher.
That's you're right, that's where you were doing it.
I don't think there's any issue with water runoff from this property.
So, the water will be...
There's like a, a swale between the two properties, large swale, but the abutment's property sits higher, so there's no way it's gonna go into the...
It's gonna go up to his property, yeah.
It's gonna go down.
To continue across the property to the back of it, which is the opposite side from my neighbor's.
What you kind of said, I think, last time, right?
But, you know, yeah.
But, yeah.
You gotta miss the peak.
So, you also get to look at all the trees that were taken down, conservation, we can improve with that, and there's still quite a buffer between that property and that.
Yeah, there's still trees.
There's other in-law apartments in the neighborhood, so...
Yeah.
It's a motion to approve that.
Yeah, I mean, we talked about all this stuff before, I didn't really have...
You were good with it?
Yeah. It's shared utility, it's, uh...
Shared, I'm just saying...
Yeah, they had shared living space, everything seemed like it was, uh, what the bylaw asked.
The question they did have on site was, will they, when will they be notified? I don't think Bob and I really knew with how the...
Is it from the approval of, or when the letter's written?
Yeah, the letter will go out, and then I think it gets filed, and they have to wait 20 days for an appeal, right? Yeah.
And it's just a question of how quick we can get that letter processed, once you vote to approve.
Well, that's, that's an open question, too.
Well, you have, you have a 20-day waiting period.
Yes, we have.
Yeah.
If you get, if you get...
From when it gets filed, yeah.
In favor tonight, you get 20 days, and you, you're all set. Anybody wanna make a motion to this petition?
Make a motion to approve petition 989.
Second.
On favor?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Myself, yes?
Very good.
Good luck.
Oh, we gotta sign these, yeah.
We need to see if they know what they're doing, motion, what they're doing.
Oh, yeah. That is some information.
Wanna give me? There you go.
Just has a little bit of background on all that.
Thank you.
Yep. Breakfast speed today, yeah, it's coming.
Trying to make them.
No, 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 no. This one's at 7:30, right?
Yeah.
It's on time, 7:30, 8 o'clock, 7:37? Could be 7, could be 7, that's a possibility. Gotta put up a fight. All right, what, probably 7:20, right? 9:90?
Yeah.
I don't care. The Halifax zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, April 10th at 8:00 PM, in the Board of Selectmen's Meeting Room at Halifax Town Hall, 499 Plymouth Street, Halifax, on the application by Rory Keane for a variance to build a 24-by-20 detached garage located at 312 Wood Street, Halifax. Said property is owned by Rory Keane of 312 Wood Street, Halifax, as shown on Assessor's Map 118, Lot 10, Book 45318, Page 217. The applicant is seeking a variance to build a 24-by-20 detached garage, which requires a variance of the side yard setback from 30 feet to 18.3 feet, in accordance with the Town of Halifax zoning bylaw, Section 167-11, Table of Dimensional and Density Regulations. The area is own residential and it's petition number 990.
Bob and I also had the opportunity to look at this property.
Got it done on Saturday.
We did, it was marked out. There really isn't any other place you can put it, except the drainage pipe behind of the way the, uh, the wall comes in, and probably wouldn't be able to pull out otherwise, and there's nothing directly next to him that you'd be painting on, it's just the driveway and the, and so...
So, it's a topography issue?
Topography, um, yeah, like Tina said, you move the garage, all it closes to the house, there's a retaining wall, there really isn't enough room to pull the vehicle out of the garage, the retaining wall's in the way, topography of the land is just, so, the land pitches away from the house, and there's a bond out back pitched away from that, so there's a drainage pipe in the middle, you push it back further, you'd be on top of that.
Yeah, that drainage pipe is probably a couple of...
There was like a two-foot manhole.
Yeah, a couple of manholes, looking at the site, site running, yeah.
And it definitely all flows down, you can't get rid of that.
What's the point of the board? Anybody wanna make a motion to it?
It seems like the, the variance is based on the topography, if we can't do the same thing anywhere else.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve petition number 990.
A second?
Any conditions?
Yes.
What's that? Any conditions?
No conditions at all, no?
Personal use, no business.
Oh, yeah. You're gonna use it for your own use, or...
Uh, just personal use.
Okay, approved.
Yes.
Everybody, yes?
Yes.
All right, good luck.
Done, all right.
Well, than last time, huh?
Yeah. Just getting it down. Halifax zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, February 13th at the Board of Selectmen's Meeting Room at Halifax Town Hall, 499 Plymouth Street, Halifax, on the application by Bedeangeli Duarte for a special... for a special permit to develop a proposed site of a contractor storage and office space located at 359 Plymouth Street Halifax. Said property is owned by Angela Duarte of 102 Pond Street East Bridgewater. As shown on Assessor's Map 73, lot 9, book 57341, page 211. Assessor's Map 63, lot 14, book 57341, page 211. And Assessor's Map 63, lot 1A, book 57341, page 211. The applicant is seeking a special permit to construct, construct a contractor storage and office space as this project would violate Halifax zoning by law 167-7 Schedule of Use Regulations and requires a special permit for light industrial use or a special permit for warehouse facility. Area is on business, it's petition number 986.
How are you?
Not sure if we add anything else.
We are being.
That's a good question.
I accidentally printed that on, on slide 17, but we'll all be able to read it.
No cheaters here.
So one more thing here. That's for you. Prepared a little brief on the discussions we had at the last hearing. So for the record, Kevin Grady from Grady Consulting, representing the applicants for the special permit for you. We had a pretty long meeting last month. Reviewed the details of the plan and ultimately at the end we requested a continuance as we were sure that we would get a favorable ruling from the, from the board. So we requested the continuance and we wanted to provide a little more information to help the board see that petition in the eyes of the proponent that this project and the use, it will not be more detrimental to the establishment or future character of the neighborhood or the town. I believe the sticking points last time was the use, not necessarily belonging in the, this area of town and maybe also the size of the building. So as, as we discussed at length last time, that the standard is that the project use and the layout will not be more detrimental to the establishment or future use of the neighborhood. So I have a number of bullet points that support the applicant's argument that it will not be more detrimental. First is that the use is not going to generate a significant amount of traffic as, as much as an allowed use, some of the allowed uses that could go here. This just happens to be a special permit because of the referral from the building inspector and it's not, it's, it's the use is written as a special permit so that you can approve it with safeguards to reduce the detrimental impact. So some of the uses that could go here include a retail store, a restaurant, or a school. As you know, if we did another Dunkin' Donuts and multi-use, we'd be generating a lot more traffic than what you're anticipating here, so. Same thing with restaurants or schools potentially, but obviously the retail's a much more traffic intense use and that's allowed without a special permit. So as far as traffic goes, this project is not going to be detrimental to the neighborhood, not more detrimental than items that don't require a special permit. Second, the owner will, will agree if the board wants to condition it that there'll be no storage for parties on the property. Then we will not be storing those and delivering them. So you can put that right in there and that'll be enforceable by the zoning enforcement officer. One of the other items that came up is that the scale of the building may be large, why are we going so big? We did discuss that we have some pretty good sized equipment that we want to put inside and that the Mason Dixon line on Sprinkle Systems is 7,500 square feet, so this thing is just under 7,500 square feet. There's, I prepared an exhibit plan for you showing you the multiple buildings that are in the vicinity of this and they're also in the same zone that are similar size and require parking and generate traffic, et cetera. Dunkin' Donuts right next door is 4,500. The old Tedeschi's here, that building is 5,000. The Happy Dragon is about 7,000. The Lionville Tavern building here is about 7,200, obviously Stop and Shop is behind that is extremely large. The bank is about 7,800, Autozone is 7,500. The Nezarella Farm building is about 2,500 and the bike shop down here is 17,500. So just looking at the satellite, you can pick off a bunch of buildings right in this area that match the scale of this. And it is in the same zone and it is outside the historic zone. So we don't think that this building, which we believe is similar in scale to these ones, is more detrimental to the, to the neighborhood or to the town, or the future of the town. It was also mentioned that landscape businesses are uncommon in commercial zones. I drive by them every day on the way here, I drove by one in Kingston that I didn't list here, No Fear Landscapes, right, everyone of six. There's residences on all, on all sides of it. Vertolino landscapers on Washington Street in Pembroke, that's in a residential commercial zone. They have outdoor storage equipment, et cetera. Laterno Tree Landscape, they're also on Washington Street in Pembroke. I did give you guys exhibit sign, a few of these, move up here in a sec though. Kingston Mulch right in Kingston Center across from the Big Y. That abuts a residential neighborhood, it's also in a commercial district, it's not an industrial district. And then here in Halifax, CMAC is a contractor business with outdoor storage and outdoor parking and that's at 590 Mont Pontet Street, heading up towards Hanson. Kay Lima Company is at 320 Mont Pontet Street and it abuts Walmart and that is in the same area of town, it's in the same zoning district. We think that'll be the first exhibit, the first two, sorry, two and three. The third sheet here, you can see that that's the Walmart parking lot and Mont Pontet Street is just in front, to the bottom of the page here. They have landscape bins, they have trucks and front end loaders. And this is in the same neighborhood, same district. Nezarella Farm is in Shorey, you know, for them, around Plymouth Street, they store mulch outside. It's, I mean, they have other uses as well, obviously. But it's not screened like this applicant is proposing to screen the entire perimeter of their storage yard. So there's several, let's flip through these next ones. So five, we have sheet four, it's 590 Mont Pontet Street, that's the CMAC. I checked the zoning map and it's in the same zone, there's some spot zoning as you go up there. I did a historic shot of the same site just to show that you have storage of equipment in this location. That last satellite that flew by happened to take the picture and there was no vehicles there, so I had to go back in time. This, this next one, this is Kingston Mulch. This is Kingsbury Club and CBS, a bank, a supermarket, sounds just like Halifax, this area Halifax. Got the same type, although you could probably use a big gym and a hockey rink. If you like.
Sell out.
Not, not at the last night.
Well, true.
The next one, the next sheet is Laterno, basically in Pembroke. This is residential commercial district, there's residents here. Landscape Supply across the street, this is a commercial area, this is the residential commercial district. You can do either uses along this corridor and Pembroke. Let's see, and so the applicant is proposing to store everything behind the building and behind enclosures to protect the neighborhood and the town from the detrimental impacts that may be, that may be a problem for some, storage of, as I just showed you, storage of some of these materials is pretty common as you just drive around Kingston, Pembroke, Halifax. We've also added additional, we, we had additional landscaping since our last meeting. We added some plantings along this property line here, the idea being as you're driving down here, that you might have been able to see in here, so we added some overstory. Back here, we're not gonna block the sight line that has been brought up here. Just gonna ask you a sheet here real quick. I'm prepared, I may as well show it off.
Might as well.
So our landscape architect showed some additional little story trees, so you'll have the six-foot privacy fence and then you'll have deciduous trees, a mix of deciduous and common firsts up above to, you know, block the views as you're coming this way. It'll also help block the views of everybody going to your coffee in the morning, as they're looking over to see these guys hard at work. The applicant modified the facade and the architecture of the building. They also went back and took a look at changing the landscape in the front. Initially, there was some trees that were proposed, but I think it's gonna be a little easier to maintain those sight lines if they just did some flower beds and they wanted to have a flag in the front, so we added that to, to break it up and they were planning on doing that anyway, so they had their graphic artists add that. So again, this section of town is, is shown on this plan here is, it's mostly retail, it's mostly the retail section of town. There's, you know, I don't think there's any historic buildings in here. It's not the center of town, I would think, you know, I grew up in Kingston, with the Silver Lake, lived there 50-plus years. And I think the historic part of Halifax is this area right here, is all the white buildings. I think this is your commercial district and then further down is your industrial district. So the applicant, I guess, that's about all I have, the applicant respectfully requests that we would find that this project is, will not be more detrimental to the existing or future of, of the town. And I don't know if you guys have anything you want to add to, to that. I don't know, we'll, we'll discuss it with the board again.
What do you think?
You've done a ton of work.
The next day after this, I was like, I'm not putting this off, I'm doing this.
Beneficial not being retail, less traffic, which is a big problem in that area. I think it's a little out of character, but you brought up a lot of good points with areas, especially the one next to Walmart.
I didn't even know that.
Yeah, when they got that approved, that's not what they came, told us they were gonna do, to be very honest. So that's, that's part of what I worry about.
What's that?
When they came and.
Who's that?
That, that next to Walmart is. Yes, they have.
Who's that other kid?
They came over here.
No, who's that other kid?
Whether they sold it or something, that's not what they presented to us.
This is a different owner than the kid that came up.
That's probably right, yeah.
But they don't have any permits for this. Why, so why can they run a business like this?
Yeah, 'cause nobody was going over there and telling them not to, that's why. That was not, that was not approved, I don't think, but that's.
What, the one, the one next to Walmart?
Yeah. That, that's been two or three things they didn't have approval for. Just like at the end of Andy and Brian, they said they're.
It's a, it's a asphalt company and.
Yeah, and they have all these bins, but, but there's other companies around town that have mulch and loom and, in a business district without any special permits and they're approved for outside sales, special permit for that, but no permit for this storage.
I think these are, this is the type of business we'd like to have in town, they've been very thorough, they've done their work, done their homework. I don't see this being detrimental to the area.
Very thoughtful, I think it, I think it's a little out of character, you've got the Cape businesses to the left, looking at the picture to the left, a couple of Cape homes across the street.
But I think planning board, dealing with the aesthetics of it correct.
I think it's gonna be much different no matter what they, what they're looking for.
I think they have, but I mean, being a landscape company, they're certainly making this here beautiful, right there. I mean, it's gonna be nice when you drive by, it's gonna be, just like you mentioned, you know. Being a landscape company, you're not gonna have a piece of crap, you're gonna have it, you're gonna have it beautiful.
It's their appetite.
I can understand that, yeah. And you have done a tremendous amount of work, congratulations to you, yeah.
Do you have pictures of what the front looks like?
Yeah.
With the fencing and?
This was just zoomed in a little bit.
So what kind of fencing are you proposing?
So here it looks clear, so you can see through it.
Yeah.
It's, it's a privacy fence, I don't know if you just added on, if it's gonna be like a cedar or a.
Like a.
Vinyl.
It's not, not chain link though?
No.
Yeah, and one of the privacy is in the front, so when you drive by, you haven't seen anything at the back at all.
The iron gates look nice.
At least you guys want something else, but that's, that's the idea. Some privacy in the front, so you don't see.
Stand at six foot?
Back there, yes, it's good.
Now, are those iron gates or are you gonna do privacy gates there as well?
All privacy, that's the idea. At least you guys, you know, want me to do something else. I do finish the list, so I haven't gone something else.
Yeah, we're trying to change that if it's a problem.
I know you've worked on the facade of the front of the building, but are you familiar with Morrison's in Plymouth?
Morrison's?
Equipment, across from like Home Depot. They have a big metal building, but their front of the building has an overhang, that looks really nice.
It's a different, yeah.
On the porch.
Kind of, yeah, I think it looks really nice and it gives it that kind of Cape rural look.
Yeah, that is, that's a different way to do this, yeah. I think they're also doing retailing.
It would soften down the commercial look of the building.
Yeah, I think, I think people go in there buying flowers and all that stuff too, I think that's. Yeah, I mean, the, the issue has never been the, the quality of the project, the, or the, the quality of the design or the expectation that you guys, the. It's, it's a business that we want, I don't, I think all five of us want in town, I know I do. I, it, the, the question is kind of like Bob said, is, you know, if, if that whole stretch from the, the golf course to 106 was buildings like that, there would be no, there would be nothing going on down there. And that, I think, is why there's an area for buildings like those that look a lot like those down the street in the industrial area, like you mentioned. like those down the street in the industrial area, like you mentioned. That's, that's been the sticking point.
Yeah, we're not approving what it looks like, but we're all probably.
The use.
Yeah, the planning board will approve what it looks like.
Right, yeah.
But I think that's.
But I mean, we're talking, so in the summer, spring and summer, we're talking at least four bays filled with stuff, maybe the amount that they have on like Harbor Road over there. Like that's unusual for that section of town.
We just approved everyone's. Two hundred feet of the road.
Hey, that's a retail space though, like nobody, you know what I mean? Like that's.
Yeah, but he's got customers coming and going.
Right.
So it's a little different than they leave.
I think that's the point of that section of town, is my point. I got, the traffic is going to be there no matter if you have that building or not. And, and done a very good job making the case for it. So I don't, I, I feel better about it than I did the last time we met, but I, I, like the sticking point has never been this project, but it's, it's the use in that spot.
Well, the Cape Lima site, I'm with Tina. I didn't know it was there either. And I think this is a very similar scenario where there's privacy fence all the way around and there's not a Walmart parking lot behind it where you can see it from, you know, it's.
And to his point, the Lima property, I knew it was landscaping and asphalt, but you can't really tell what's behind that. Privacy fence. And we've never heard anything about it. I didn't realize they had bins back there. Doesn't seem to have any complaints.
I don't think they, they never came in front of the board for a permit.
Doesn't look as.
Tidy.
Yes, as this property is.
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah.
No, it's like night and day.
Yeah, totally is. Yeah, it's all gushable, yeah.
I personally would like to approve the use with maybe some tweaks on the facade from the planning board.
Did you look up?
Yeah, this is what that looks like. I mean, it's.
And so when, so when, I, we may have talked about this last time, but the, but the work that will be going on on site is during the office and crew hours, like seven to five, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Roughly, roughly, not like in 501, everybody has to drop their stuff, but like roughly. Yeah, no, let's say.
Correct. You show up at seven.
Yeah.
A lot of guys will leave and then the office staff is arriving at nine. Probably some sun comes up early, but.
I think it would be.
Yeah, that's more essential.
No, we didn't. It looks.
It does, yeah. That's, even the minute you said it, I was like, I have to get over.
Do you like?
Yeah, no, yeah. I like it, yeah.
So if approved, are you open to the idea of changing the facade again?
Yes.
I mean.
Just throwing me a question.
Yeah, that's, that's it, yeah.
Adding like a porch in front like that.
It's going to have an overhang all length of the building. It's kind of, that foundation is.
We can, we can add something.
It softens down the look of the.
I'm not the architect, but I did give them that idea.
Want to open to the members of the audience?
Yeah, yeah.
Any members of the audience want to speak to this?
Fred Corrigan, Seven Rosewood Drive. This lot is what I call danger. Because what type of business can you put into that little lot on that dangerous curve that is going to have less traffic danger than that one right there? You can't put a barber shop in there, you can't put a beauty shop in there. Maybe you could put a lawyer in there if you didn't have any clients. But this company is going to come in there with their small trucks, not the same thing that's over behind Walmart where they put in their big paving contractors and they park on gravel. And the same way with C Mac down in the business district, down across to the church where they park on gravel. And then their runoff from their vehicles runs right into Westmont Ponce because you've got a fifteen foot drop from where they parked their truck right down into the lake, okay? These people are paving everything, have done, stood on their head from what I have seen to make this thing fit into the character of the town. Right next to that building, you've got the cabinet company, but if you want to look down their driveway, they park their trucks out in front. They may have three or four wooden pallets sitting out there and that's in a historical district, okay? Unfortunately, we can't go around and police everybody, but when a company has said, look, we're going to pave it, we're going to put grease traps inside the building, we're going to collect any of our waste, we're not going to stack up skids. Our vehicles are parked in there at night. And then think about the other side of this. Their employees go in in the morning, grab their trucks and their trailers and they beat it off to work. They come back in the afternoon. What happens to that business in the wintertime? They do some snow plowing. How much traffic does that create? The business right next door, our sweet little Dunkin' Donuts, where if you're handicapped and you pull in there to the handicap parking and it's the right time of day, you can't get your butt out of there because you've got the line of traffic behind you and a handicap driver can't even back up. And in fact, some of the people get so frustrated in there, they back around to the front of the building and go out the entrance because there hasn't been the proper signs there that says, do not exit here, okay? So we have some other problems in this town, but that particular Dunkin' Donuts, let me give you three little figures that you may not be aware of. December first, 2022, 6:30, 13 in the morning. Between 6:13 and 7:13, 130 cars came into that parking lot and 130 cars left. So 260 cars came in and out of Dunkin' Donuts on that day. December 4th, on a Sunday, eight o'clock in the morning, 140 cars in, 140 out, 280 cars. Monday, 7:30, 3 a.m. on 12:05, 115 cars in, 115 cars out, crisscrossing your traffic, blocking traffic, which is illegal to do on the highway, but nobody is going out there and ticketing anybody. But yet this exists and we gave a permit to Dunkin' Donuts to have two additional businesses put on that lot and thank God only one has started up, but the other one will sooner or later, and that's going to add to this chaos. And yet we're working here with a business that is going to create greater highway safety. They're going to solve one of the problems of Dunkin' Donuts because they're going to take down those foolish trees that are in the front of their lot that blocks that dangerous curve with people trying to get out of there. So what other type of business do you think can go into that lot that's going to be better suited relative to citizen safety and highway safety, generate employment in town, be of a service to other people in town and have everything nice and neat and clean for the people that drive by and say, isn't this a nice little business? So I think all of those things, even though we try to do businesses and retail businesses in our, in our business district, we have broken that law more times than you can shake a stick at and some of them are deplorable. But this one is starting off on the right foot and because it's a special permit, if they don't stay on the right foot, we're wide open to go in and get after their butts because that special permit carries as long as they got that business there. And I hope all of this you take into consideration because I think it's one of the best things that could go into that little lot and be advantageous to the town. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I, I agree with everything you say. I, I, the last thing I think we should do is limit the businesses that want to come to this town because we don't want traffic though. That's, that's, and I don't think it has anything to do with them because I think this is one lot, but they should fix the road if that's what they're going to do. Like that, that left hand turn into Stop and Shop is now a left hand turn into Stop and Shop and Dunkin' Donuts every morning and they should fix that. So the reality is that the town has grown faster than the road has grown and it's limiting the amount of business we count. So the reality should be, anything should be able to go into that lot. They should fix the road so it's safer. That's, that's what I wish would happen, but that has nothing to do with this, this project in total.
I would just have to, just on the fence, but it just near the large steel building losing, I mean, the town looks like there's growth coming in the future here. And we don't have a lot of free area to lose commercial retail space that might be needed later on, but I mean, it looks nice, but it's just, I'm still on the fence, just being on the fence, large storage steel building and some of the other businesses you pointed out at the steel buildings that, like that lean on Washington Street, there's a residential house converted into offices, their garage out back, looks like a big residential garage, wood frame. So I guess we could eat away with it, kind of on the fence?
I don't think, that's been my concern, I think, the whole time. Like, and, and the truth is, it is. It's down at the end of this stretch. It's like I've driven by it a bunch between now and the last meeting. It's, it's not defining of that stretch, I don't think. I, I think the traffic concerns are fair. I wish they would fix the road, but that's going to take a lot longer than, especially if they're going to build more stuff with more lights and all sorts of stuff. But yeah, and I think, I, everything I think we're doing here in this section of town, there's a lot of change happening pretty quickly and I think it's only going to increase. So that's, that's my only. The job you have done, I don't think anybody has come in here in the, the 12 years I've been on the zoning board and done as much work as you've done for this project. I don't know if anybody else can say that, but I've, you've done a great job.
It's impressive.
Yeah, like, and you've listened and you've adjusted stuff, even tonight you were showing pictures of Morrisons on Long Pond Road here, saying, sure. Like I've never, I've never seen that. Like people are usually yelling at us, so.
I would like to add though, the idea you guys had to change the facade to be getting less of a steel building look, that is a good idea. And if it was kept clean without storage of pallets, being seen.
I mean, if this is any indication of how much.
Yeah, right.
Put in upfront, I'm pretty certain it's going to be shipshape.
What kind of conditions would you want to put on this?
I think in the past meetings, we've talked about what can be stored there. I think that you guys have spoken about, you're not going to store any fertilizer or anything like that. Hours of operation.
What's that?
Hours of operation.
Hours of.
I don't know if we can do that though, because if they're going to be plowing, how do we do that?
You can do hours of operation in the summertime and then different in the wintertime. In the wintertime when, you know, there's no snow, they're not going to be out there doing anything. But when there is snow, that's an exception. They have, they have clients, they have to open up and all that stuff and that's, that's an exception. They have, they have to go out and do, do their job. And hours of operation will probably in the summertime and not to, you can't control that, you know? And with the time, you guys don't store and they have to go out and plow or sand or whatever they have to do, you know?
Everybody needs plows.
What's that?
We need more plows.
Not this year, but probably next year.
And.
I think they presented, I mean, if, if, if there's any, if there's any conditions to put on there, I think they suggested in their paperwork, it's best to present it. What's going to be stored there, what's not going to be stored there.
Only have one business, you know, the only business that they have, that's the landscaping business be run out of there and no other business other than the landscaping business. It's the only way we can protect the town by putting conditions on the special permit to keep, keep the town the way the people like it, you know? Anybody want to make a motion to accept?
But the conditions are what?
Want to do the conditions and.
So conditions would be no storage of fertilizer, hazardous material?
I mean, gasoline is hazardous material, but they, they have that in their small containers. That's, you know, anything over, you're going to have a fuel storage on there?
No.
No fuel storage?
Be kept inside enclosed.
No, no, for your trucks, you're not going to have any pumps for your trucks, no fuel storage.
Use the gas, don't, I guess.
No porta potty storage.
No porta potty storage.
Then we have, we have a different location for that.
Where's your other location?
East of the door.
Behind Tri-Town.
Bay Station.
Yeah. Where, where VRS watch.
Hours seven to.
Hours of operation, what time do you start in the morning? Like in the springtime, what time do you want to start? What time do you, do you come back?
We start seven to five, that's.
Seven, hours of operation, seven to five.
Landscaping company.
It's, it's a busy.
Anybody take a note for that? You want to put, you want to put that in writing somewhere?
Yeah, I think he's writing it all down.
Whoever's taking minutes.
Yeah, whoever's taking minutes.
Somebody, somebody someday is going to take mine.
Well, she must be listening too.
Yes, yeah, it's on TV. Yeah, you might want to write it down, but you can write it on the decision mark if I do that.
Yeah, we can do that.
Change of facade also to kind of like the farmer's porch type look.
We're not trying to be.
Similar to Morrisons in Plymouth.
It's just because sometimes when you put a porch in the front, it's easier for you to put it back into the pillar, you know? And then, right, it's easy, then when you, when you just have the foundation, because if they hit the foundation, that is going to happen, but if there's a porch, then it makes it easier for.
Do you have the room between the parking spots in the building?
It'll be, it'll be a narrow.
Overhang.
Overhang, yeah, it can't be very big. I think we have four feet.
Something's soft in that big tall building.
Right. What is the size of the lot? An acre, over an acre?
Actually, a little bit, a little bit more, 70, I don't know. Eighty thousand, two acres.
Two acres?
Yeah.
Now you own the lot.
Yes.
About yours.
It's probably an acre and a half usable because this corner has a well and resource area and we need, there's a 50 foot notice there, so maybe it's a little even less than that.
I'll second. That's it. So what do you have written down?
No storage of fertilizer, no fuel storage, no porta potty storage, hours seven to five. We changed, changed the facade to a farmer's porch, similar to Morrisons, farmer's porch style. Anything else?
I mean, the hours of operation in this.
It's just summer, it's landscaping business.
Yeah. In the wintertime, it's going to fluctuate. Any other conditions? The lighting should be.
You had. You had the lighting.
Yeah, we have a light plan in the plan set.
They've covered everything.
And there's no heavy, you just got to have a bobcat's hitcher.
And you guys made a copy of this latest plan. The only difference is the landscape section that we added. I can just roll it up and like an email to somebody.
I don't think that's going to make a difference for us.
Okay, in the decision. It's going to make the same.
Planning board is going, the planning board is going to care about that.
Are they going to give you the sight plan or not? You haven't.
We've been waiting, so they, they wanted you guys to go first and so did Conservation, so we've been putting them. We really, they don't really want to talk about drainage if we don't have use.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
Have we got a motion in a second?
Yes.
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 Myself, yes.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time, everybody.
Thank you for.
Yeah, I mean, you made it, you made it easy to say yes. Easier.
We'll also plan to volunteer on whatever landscape work can be put in the project.
Well, they just peeled off all the grass over here with the fire truck, so.
We're going to be adopting a lot of the fire beds.
We're gonna be adopting a lot of the, um, far beds around town.
Cameras are on.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, guys. Good night.
Thank you.
No, we need.
All right.
We'll see you, guys.
Thank you.
Nice.
Okay.
We have this one here that Kurt Marble was approved. Variance was granted on 12, 13, 21. No action was taken within the one-year period. Does he need to reapply, or we grant him an extension?
You can't, you can't grant an extension. I looked that up.
I think it's two years for a special permit, one for.
Yes, but to grant an extension, it has to be within, within the one-year time.
One-year period, so he has to reapply, so. Right down, he has to reapply.
Do we need to, I mean, it's the law. It's not, we're not voting on that. I'm writing on this.
Reapplication required? My plans? K9 kennel camp?
Yeah, it's all just behind. That's just cause.
It's unreasonable. No, nowhere to write it, like what?
Should we all sign it?
Uh, no, because I don't wanna, I don't wanna agree to extend it. I just wanna, right? Extension cannot be granted this time under law petition, I must reapply, right?
Mm-hmm, we'll put it with that page.
Any comments?
Nope, just wanted to make sure. We're gonna get ready now.
Ah, all right, okay. They did a good job.
I make a motion that we pay the bills for Jordan van Nagle and 21 cents. Zach, WB Mason, Zach.
They wrote yes on that.
We signed it?
It's pretty cheap, toners, 300 bucks.
It does.
Punchers, yeah. I feel like a toner at school was like eight. What else we got? Uh, oh, there's a memo.
No, there's not.
There isn't?
No. There's not.
Really? Yeah.
Not in my packet.
There's a one with here.
See?
Please sign. What's that? Is that it? That's it? The attached site plan submission from Kennedy K9 Camp.
Oh, that's for 416.
Oh, Lord. What's 416? What's that?
That's next door to me, on the other side by the bank, behind the bank.
Plan is for a commercial Doug kennel, Doug daycare, training, boarding, oh, in the back there?
Yeah, in the back.
You thought they were gonna put that other thing back there? Yeah.
No, it's, the bank is right here.
Yeah.
The other building is right here. It's right behind.
We looked at this before.
There was something else that was gonna go back there, right?
Well, the, the other thing was a, another automotive repair shop.
That.
Yeah, right? Is that the same spot?
No, that's.
It's a different spot?
Different building.
There's a map here. I'm gonna open it up.
The big building, the big building is where the Doug, Dougie daycare building.
That's a lot of stuff. Doug kennel, daycare, training, boarding, and grooming. The Doug stuff always makes me nervous, that's it. Okay.
Right over here, right there. There's the back, all there's.
Oh, I see.
The bank, and it's on the corner.
Oh, I see.
They have this whole area.
That's what I thought you were saying, okay.
Right behind the church, huh?
Huh?
Right behind the church, huh?
It's like dark days.
Yeah.
They'll be, they'll be praying with the dogs.
Yeah, yes. Okay. Any questions? No, we'd send them if we had to, so. We just save them on TV, you know, over here.
We're willing them to go.
That's right.
And should we, like, send Caroline a recount or something?
Um.
Just to make sure she's getting.
Yeah, like, what do we, what, what leftover stuff do we have? I don't think we have any questions for the town.
Well, we have to, we have to make sure somebody gets in touch with.
Oh, are you doing your.
Because that gentleman's been in for some.
I know, yeah. You're driving a lawyer, right?
It should be a done deal by the time.
I'll talk to, what's her name there?
Is it Caroline? Caroline Voight?
There's a town.
That's the one who sends us our stuff.
What's his name?
Cody.
Cody. I'll talk to Cody tomorrow.
Oh, yeah.
I'll talk to Cody tomorrow, so we can.
We still need permission.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
We do?
We do.
Oh, Lord.
We should try everything.
All right.
Ocean of a John?
Yes, okay.
Go ahead.
Let's get it.
Yes.
Yes! All right.
That was a quick one.
Big win.